We're gonna get started here. Let's see, agenda. Thank you. Will we test the people online? Okay, we're gonna call this meeting, this special session to order at 10:33. Councilwoman Spotted Bear, can you give us an opening prayer? Opila. Councilman Standing Soldier, can you give us some words of encouragement?
Good morning, everybody, and thank you, Mr. President. The words I would like to say for those that would like to hear are, we come together to make decisions, decisions not based on arguments, decisions based on wisdom and knowledge. If we argue everything that we propose to make our people stronger and live better lives, then what are we teaching our young ones? Let us come to common decisions and meet halfway. That way, our start to better our communities and our oyate will be strong. Oh, Hetchatu.
Opila. Secretary, roll call.
Good morning. Just want to say good morning to everyone, the listeners, council, executive board, and staff. Gillian Spotted Bear, present. Norman Standing Soldier.
Here.
David Poyer. Little White Man is going to be late. George Dreamer Jr. Tyler Lunderman.
Here.
Jackie Sears is excused. Garfield Still. James Cross is going to be late. Blaine Little Thunder.
Here.
Jeremy Rosales.
Here.
Dave Kelly.
Present.
Troy Little.
Here.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Here.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Here.
Lyle Weston.
Present.
Donna Ghost Bear. Richard Greenwall Senior.
Here.
Anna Halverson.
Present.
B. Frandl.
Yep.
Here.
Craig Dillon.
Here.
Fifteen present, three absent, one excuse to running late. We established form. This time, I'll turn it over Sergeant Arms.
Good morning, Ed Ironclad, Sergeant Arms. Want to say good morning to all the listeners out there. We have a lot of people listening, friends, relatives. So I'm gonna say good morning to everybody there. Just friendly reminder, council. You could use your mics. Also, wait for the chair to call on you. Sometimes we have a couple conversations going at one time there, so once again, I'm just gonna echo this. I'm not saying this coming from me. I hear this from the people out there. When I talk to them, they make comments like that, so I just wanted to share that with you. Opila.
Thank you, Sergeant Arms. Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, approval of agenda.
Second.
Yeah. Motion, motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Oh, we do. Oh, we do. Okay, we do have the two-thirds from E and BD.
Motor fuels purchase?
No. Motor fuels purchase? Okay, so what Okay, so we're gonna run the vote. Secretary? Yeah, yeah. Okay, recognize Councilman Cross at 10:39.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Blaine Little Thunder.
What's a motion on?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Sixteen unanimous motion carried. Okay, moving on to next agenda item, Law and Order Committee. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the chair.
Thank you, Chairman. The first item in Law and Order is a selection of chief judge. Do we have Laurel Ironclad online?
Yes, here.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning to all.
Good morning. So this morning, you're the first item on our agenda through Law and Order, and it's the the selection or interview for the chief judge position?
Correct.
Okay, so you're aware of this and are ready for interview and questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like me to do a brief introduction?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm better watch that cheaty api. Nachante watch that nape cheese api. Pe hisa pawi amachi api. My English name is Laurel Ironclad. Mitaki api. I thank you all for this opportunity to speak here today. I recognize President Starr comes out, the executive officers, all council members, and I appreciate also the ability to be heard by tribal members who are listening in. Opila. I apologize at this time for my elders, for apologize to my elders for speaking before them, but I would like to share briefly some information to let everybody know who I am. Is that okay with council?
Yes.
My parents are, opila, my parents are Eileen Ironclad and Dr. Paul Robertson, and my gaga is the late Eddie Ironclad, and my unchi is the late Mary Locke Ironclad. Through them, I carry both Lakota blood and Crow blood. On my paternal side, I am the daughter of Willie Hendrix and the granddaughter of Thelma and Landell Hendrix. I am an enrolled member of our Ogallalasoo tribe, excuse me, and I'm from the Mila Yatapika Tiospaie, the ninth chief community, raised primarily in Pahisinte district. As a young child, actually, we lived in Pine Ridge up until late seventies, we moved from Pine Ridge to Porcupine, where I attended Our Lady of Lords School for elementary K through eight, and then I went on to go to school, attend, and graduate from Red Cloud High School. I see some of my classmates there in the graduated from Red Cloud High School before going off to Washington DC where I attended Georgetown University and graduated there with my bachelor's. From there, I went to the University of Colorado School of Law in Boulder, Colorado, where I earned my Juris Doctor. I've been, I'm a licensed attorney, licensed to practice law in South Dakota, certified there to practice law. I've been a lawyer well over 25 years now. I have experience in practicing before tribal courts. The Ogallalasoo Tribal Court immediately after coming out of law school, I've sat on the bench as a juvenile family court judge. I have experience doing, going around the country and evaluating and providing technical assistance to tribal courts across the country. And I've been, most recently, been practicing by practice law early on, went to sit on the bench as a judge, and most recently, have been working for the federal government in supporting tribal communities in a variety of ways, whether it be in judicial systems or just overall tribal development, assisting with tribes in their foundations. So with that, I recognize that time is of the essence. I'm open for questions. I know you all probably have my resume in front of you. I am here. Again, thank you all. Thank you all, and thank you for the listeners. I see Keely and the YouTube viewers. Happy to be here.
Thank you, Mrs. Ironclad. I just want to apologize. I didn't introduce myself. My name's Lyle Weston. I'm the Chair of Law and Order, and I just want to say you did quite a bit of accomplishments there because I remember you from Red Cloud. You know, I graduated a year or two above you, but you know, I still recognize you, and it's good to see you come back around full circle here and possibly being our chief judge.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I have a few questions for you. If we can start the interview process, and then I'll turn it over to council here. So what is sovereign immunity?
Sovereign immunity is the legal construct that protects tribes, protects tribal government when the tribe is acting and acting in its formal as a nation. When you're acting as a nation, you're protected legally.
Okay. When is sovereign immunity waived?
Well, it can be waived in a variety of ways. It can be waived contractually, but there is, when a person or when a tribal, for example, a tribal council member acts outside of his or her duties, that's when an argument can be made that sovereign immunity is waived.
Okay.
Those are just, that's just an example. It's very complex and nuanced, and but I just give that as a very basic, simple answer.
Okay. What is due process?
Due process is the, again, the concept is that a person or an entity has a right to be heard, and in due process, it's a right to notice, to be, if I am, if I come before a court, the proceedings should not go forward without me being provided notice, and all of my rights, my rights to be heard are all encompassed in that due process.
Okay. What is ex parte, and when is it allowed?
Our code says that it is not allowed. The code says it's not allowed, and ex parte is having conversations with, about a matter with one side when the other litigants are not participating. So an example of that is if there is a custody, a custody a custody case going on, and one side or one person that's representing themselves comes to the judge and wants to speak to the judge on a matter without the other side present, so it's outside of the judicial process.
Thank you. When does the Indian Child Welfare Act apply?
The Indian Child Welfare Act applies, again, it's very nuanced. It does not apply to just your standard custody, custody fights. It does, however, apply when there are children removed from the removed from homes. It would the Iqwa terms would apply to how placements are done, and it is, the states, states have an obligation to follow the rules and the laws of the Indian Child Welfare Act. It gives a whole outline of where, how and where children should be placed, a prioritization of placement. That's a part of Iqwa.
Okay, thank you. One last question for me, and then I'll turn it over to the council here if they have any questions for you. When should a judge recuse themselves from a case?
A judge should recuse themselves when there is a conflict. More specifically, even if there is just an appearance of of a conflict, if there's any kind of impropriety, it's called in our code, or the appearance of such, then that that judge has an obligation to step back on that and not hear that case.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I'll open it up to the council here for any questions. Go ahead.
Councilman, I believe it was Councilman Poyer, then.
Okay.
Remo.
Good morning.
Also, would like to recognize Councilman Little White Man at 10:48.
Good morning, everyone. I guess my question is a salary was set. What? Can we say that on air? Or has the salary been negotiated? So I guess my question, go ahead. Would you answer something?
Oh, it was my understanding that a salary would not be discussed until after this process. That's what I've been told.
Okay, but my question is, when can you start?
That would be, so I'm currently still working. That would be something that I would need to take a I don't want to be, I did not want to be presumptuous, and I don't want to be presumptuous, assuming that my selection is a foregone conclusion, so I have not made any provisions or plans, so I did not jump in front, so I cannot, I cannot answer that question until I until we discuss terms if we get to that point.
Okay. So when's the term of, how long is this term gonna last? I mean, till next about a year from now? So just to make you aware that it's only for one year, I guess. That's all I have before. I'll make the motion to approve and move on. Thank you.
Councilman Greenwall.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm hoping that you do come back, and I hope that you, we can come up to an agreement. One of the things, Laurel, is that we haven't had a chief judge in so long that there's so many things that are backed up in our court that require Juris Doctorates, and it's important for us to find somebody, and knowing that you're from here brings comfort to my heart because I know that you coming back home and doing full circle will be probably something that you probably always envisioned in your heart and your mind through your career in the federal services, to be able to come back and retire and then and come work for your people, so there isn't more, any other job that is more important than our chief judge at this time. There are so many things with our children and businesses and different things that are waiting for a chief judge and actual supervision over our other judges that will be under you if you take the job, so I think I did everything in high school that I could think of to terrorize you and prepare you for this moment, but I was second to do this motion.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. I also would like to just add, you know, you know, in the first administration, Laurel, and this is President Starr comes out. Good morning, Laura.
Good morning.
And she was very active when it come to tribal nations up there in Washington, and she she advocated and voiced for us and reached out to the tribes. So I just wanted to say, you know, you were very helpful in your position during the Biden administration, reaching out to the tribes, which I thought it was great for tribal nations that had a lot of questions, so I want to say thank you for your advocacy for all the tribal nations across this country, so.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
I know there's a motion on the floor, but I just had a question kind of out of curiosity. This is Councilman Standing Soldier from Lakeview District. You worked for some pretty powerful organizations in Washington DC that basically have oversight or try and work alongside Native Americans. And under one of your bullet points, you're an expert in self-determination and self-governance, and the reason I'm asking is because a government has to have a very strong court system to succeed. And this will probably be the last time I can talk to you because of separation of powers. And I'm just wondering what your stance on self-governance is? Coming from all them different areas in Washington DC, what are they saying?
Right, so there are tribes that have self-governance, and it works for them, but I haven't yet to see a tribe where or a group of tribes where it's cookie cutter and everything is the same. So what works for one tribe is not necessarily gonna work for a tribe that's even, maybe even in the same locale. It's all about governance structure. It's all about history. It's all about whether or not a tribe is a treaty tribe or not, whether, you know, there's just so many, so many so many things to consider. And like I said, it may, it may work wonderfully for one tribe. It may not be for another tribe, self-governance, the process. It just, you know, that's all, that's all I really can say because different programs work well for different tribes for a variety of reasons. You know, there might be self-governance for a really small tribe where they don't have such a huge responsibility for their numbers of people living in their area or numbers of enrolled members. It's just a matter of what the circumstances are surrounding that particular tribe. But yeah, there are, there are some, there's a very vocal vocal, some very vocal tribes or tribes with leaders that are very vocal and have a very loud voice, and self-governance seems to work very well for them.
Okay. Secretary, call for the vote. Okay, we have a question. Go ahead.
Is there a resolution?
Yeah, we're gonna read it next.
Because we don't have it, but I think that that date, when that election needs to be in that resolution, I mean, maybe it is. I didn't see it. Yeah. Yeah.
I have a question for council if it's appropriate. Timing wise. So I do understand that when the announcement went out for this, that it was to finish up the term of the last chief judge, and I looked in the code and I did not see, I only saw language that said a term, the chief judge terms are four years. Is there any, I asked the council if there is support for me to come into this position. Is there any legal reason why I could not start my own four-year term?
We got a attorney can answer that now.
Hi, Laurel. It's Rayanne.
Hi, hi, Rayanne.
The election code provides for the election of a chief judge for every four years, so you're finishing out a four-year term that was from an elected position. So that's by ordinance, and you would be free to run for election in the next election, upcoming election. So if you were to do that and get elected, then you would have a four-year term. But the Constitution just provides for filling the term for the chief judge by appointment when there's a vacancy, so that's where it comes from.
Okay, thank you.
Read the resolution.
Yeah, I can read it. Resolution of the Ogallalasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallalasoo Tribe Appointing Laurel Ironclad JD to fill vacancy of chief judge for the Ogallalasoo Tribal Court for the remaining unexpired term upon the election and seating of a chief judge in November 2026. unexpired term upon the election and seating of a chief judge in November 2026. Skipping down to the fourth whereas, whereas the Ogallawasoo Tribal Court has a vacancy for Chief Judge and a, and Tribal Council has advertised to fill the vacancy and has received a letter of intent from Laurel Ironcloud, a law-trained attorney who meets all qualifications and requirements to fill the vacancy. And whereas the OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed the qualification and vetted the applicant and recommends to, to the Tribal Council, the selection and appoint, and appointment of Laurel Ironcloud to fill the vacant position of Chief Judge for the remaining unexpired term. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council does hereby select and appoint Laurel Ironcloud Attorney-at-Law to serve as Chief Judge for the Ogallawasoo Tribe for the remaining un, unexpired term ending upon the election and seating of a Chief Judge in November 2026. And be it further resolved, compensate, compensation for Chief Judge will be as budgeted and shall not be decreased during the term of appointment. Certification, motion.
Oh, you already had a motion. Okay, secretary, call for the vote. Add it.
One thing that I didn't put in there is, uh, pending the negotiated contract. Do you want me to add that in there?
Well, is that good with the motion makers?
Yes, it is, but who's, who's gonna negotiate? Just so we're clear.
Law and order?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bring it back to our committee. All right. Okay.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Befrando?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Abstain.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Abstain.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Fourteen yes, three abstain. Motion carried.
Wopila, counsel.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
Are you gonna pick up these resumes or?
Um, thanks. Well, congratulations, uh, Ms. Ironcloud and, uh, welcome to your OST.
Thank you.
Also, yeah, again, you know, uh, I'd like to, um, mention that, you know, her advocacy on a national level, it was great to see those, that our own tribal members advocating for us up there and which is great because, you know, they stand out for us and they bring good leadership to the table. So I just want to say again, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. Wopila. Okay, so I should, I should log off now?
Laurel, real quick.
Mm-hmm. Uh-oh.
Hopefully we'll see you soon. We get you negotiated, get you on. I see your, your mom sitting over here and, um, she's gonna be preparing all the signs and stuff that are gonna be put all across the reservation to get you elected back in there in the next year. So I'll be willing to help you too. So.
Thank you.
Free and get you out there, hang up signs. You could put them in my yard too.
All right. Hold you to it.
Laurel, hang in there. Go ahead. Uh, if I could, uh, take a, take a few more, say a few things here, counsel. Congratulations to Laurel Ironcloud. Uh, she's my niece and, uh, Mr. Richard Greenwald mentioned her mother, which she's in the crowd here. And she didn't want to be recognized, but I want to recognize her efforts. She worked for the tribe here. She was the, uh, secretary. She worked in HR. She was a council. She worked on the council and also she worked with OLC. So very proud of my sister. She did a lot of work here for the Ogallawasoo Tribe. And there's a lot of people across this reservation that really did a lot of work for this tribe. So I just wanted to say that, mention that, honor all the people that did it and especially those past council people, past secretaries, all those people out there. Wopila.
Hello, President.
Uh, yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just wanna say that, uh, also kind of ditto what, uh, my relative here said, Mr. Ironcloud. I had to abstain because, you know, I am related to, uh, Ms. Ironcloud, Laurel, and I know she's gonna do a good job. And, uh, just want to say that, that she's done a lot for, you know, a lot of the tribes and where she's, uh, sitting at right now, working in DC. But I just want to wish her well. I know that we really do need a chief judge. And so I'm really glad that, uh, you know, she's going to come on board and, uh, work for the tribe in helping us in the, the court. And so just want to recognize, uh, her mother, uh, my cousin, Ms. Ironcloud, Eileen. And just want to say she's also done a lot of good work. I worked for her in the college, uh, when we, she ran the, uh, the graduate program. I think it was managers as warriors. And today it's, it's changed to tribal leadership. But she's also done some good work there. So I just want to recognize her too today and, you know, say it's really good to see her. And, um, just want to say, you know, hope you come on board soon, Laurel. Thank you.
I, I hope to be able to. Wopila.
Again, thank you. Uh, let's recognize Councilman Steele at 11:08. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our next agenda item.
Okay, item number two. This is the ordinance for, for the Inspector General. And it reads, um, Ordinance of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe Establishing an Office of Inspector General for the Ogallawasoo Tribe. Skipping down to the fourth whereas, whereas the Ogallawasoo Tribe has been harmed by individual who, individuals who have not adhered to laws, regulations and policies for the management of tribal funds. And whereas it is in the best interest of the tribe to establish a tribal position for an inspector general for the purposes of promoting fiscal, fiscal management in compliance with the laws, regulations and policies to monitor and investigate programs and tribal entities to help prevent waste, fraud and abuse. And whereas having a tribal inspector general will help improve tribal fiscal management and help prevent waste, fraud and abuse within tribal government programs and tribally-owned businesses and chartered organizations. And whereas the position of the OST Inspector General shall be a merit position under the supervision and discipline, disciplinary authority of the OST Attorney General. And whereas the OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed the matter and recommends the approval by Tribal Council for the establishment of a position for an inspector general and approve the position description. Now therefore be ordained that the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council does hereby approve and establish the position of Inspector General for the tribe as provided for in the attached position description. And be it further ordained, the tribe's inspector general shall have full review access to any bank accounts of the tribal program, tribal charter or tribal entity. And be it further ordained, the position of inspector general shall be a merit position subject to the tribe's personnel policies and procedures manual and funded from the OST General Fund. And be it further ordained that any proposed changes to the position description herein after shall be approved by the OST Law and Order Committee. Certification, motion.
Motion by Councilman Weston, second by Councilman Standing Soldier.
Just a quick.
Question?
Yes, I do have, uh, just a real quick comment. I think when we talked about this position in law and order with, uh, or the finance committee, we did talk with, uh, Michelle from the HR. And what we would like to see is that when they do put the hiring, uh, panel together, that, uh, she recommended that maybe, uh, getting some attorneys or some, uh, people with legal background to interview this position. So I just want to make sure that, uh, will be a part of the hiring process when they do interview this position. So, uh, but that was her recommendation. So I just, if she's listening, I just want to make sure we get that part, you know, done. Thank you.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Befrando?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon? David Kelly?
Nope.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yep.
Anna Halverson?
Seventeen yes, one no. Motion carried. Councilman Londonman, you had a question?
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, at this time I would like to ask if we could give the floor to, to my Unchi, Eileen, one of the elders in, uh, Porcupine District. Like to give her the floor at this time. Thank you.
I just, um, would like to, um, I guess, support. Thank you for your support, uh, for the chief judge. And I know that, um, that's a really big challenge, a major challenge here. Um, I've seen that happen over the years, working with children, um, working with folks, with people and even having to go into the court myself, uh, to support people. And, um, so in a way, I was, you know, had mixed feelings when she said she was going to, um, submit a letter of intent. And it's just, uh, you know, the mother in me that, um, hated to see her that go that way because it is a very political, um, position also. It can be, um, but it doesn't have to be that way either. But I wanted to say wopila to all of you because there has to be a lot of work, a lot of work done there. But, uh, what I'm here today for is to also say wopila to the council, the finance committee, um, for supporting, um, the Knife Chief Buffalo Nation Society, uh, Generations Indigenous Ways, um, Thunder Valley, um, these are nonprofits that, uh, work together. And every summer we provide a healing camp, um, in the Black Hills. If we can raise enough money, we do that. And what we're seeing over the last 12, 13 years is that we have a lot of children who really need, um, a lot of strong support, a lot of healing through, whether it be through traditional Western ways of counseling, um, or the, uh, traditional, our Laon Lakota traditional ways. And for them to blend it together has really helped a lot of our children. And we see that. And one of the, um, things that happened, uh, last summer is that a group of the elders were there and we, and I'm in that category, um, we're raising our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren, meaning that we have guardianship. And for whatever reasons, our children, um, as parents are really, really struggling, um, in their own ways. And so it falls on us. So a group of us got together and what came out of that meeting, um, was that we need to have our own elders healing camp. Because there's so many things that we don't know that our children, our grandchildren and great-grandchildren are facing. What kind of drugs that are out there, you know, what, um, and where do we go for help? Who do we call? Who's gonna really support us when, um, somebody comes in and takes our children and they don't tell us where those children are going? Or, you know, there's a lot of issues and I know, I know that you're all aware of this that's going on there. But I know one school where my grandson goes, he's gonna be 14 years old, um, pretty soon. And the, the principal told me, and this was about a year and a half ago, 80% of the children in that elementary school, um, were being raised by their grandchildren, by their grandparents, 80%. And another school here, um, in the area, another one, it's about that high or even higher in the number. Over, um, in another area of our reservation, um, I spoke to a counselor and she said, the children that she works with, the children that they, that they, um, see, again, they're with their grandparents or great-grandparents. And there's a lot of resources that we're not aware of, or maybe there are no resources. Um, and how do we do this? How do we even pick up the phone and say, where are we going to, um, who do we call for help? You know, and, um, a lady, she said, they came to this school and they picked up my grandson and he didn't come back from school. I called around finally, I looked around finally, and finally they told me that he was at JDC. And then they wouldn't tell me why. He sat there for four days. You know, and that, when we talk about due process, we talk about violation of rights. Those children, our trakojas, our, everybody, we have rights. And who is out there really fighting for those children too? And for the grandparents that, us who have them? You know, and so what we're doing is we're, we had a planning meeting this summer and this was at Camp Bob Marshall of the elders. Um, we took our grandchildren there and, um, so we're having a second meeting and I wanted to inform, uh, you all about this. And while I have, um, can be on the radio, I'll, I'll share this too. On Thursday, November 20th at, uh, Piawi Choni, at the multipurpose building there, we're gonna have a meeting from beginning 10 o'clock. And I'm looking for, looking to, um, really invite to especially the boarding school survivors. And I'll share that that's what I went through too. I'm a boarding school survivor, um, from a religious school. And there, I, I see some of my classmates and a lot of my classmates are gone now, have passed on. But we've shared our struggles in our life, you know? And there are many things that, um, other people have shared with me too. Some women said, we did not get to, um, have our, go through the womanhood ceremony. Another man said, we didn't, we didn't do the manhood ceremony. We didn't learn these ways. We were taught to be ashamed of our identity, of who we were. We were taught to be ashamed of our identity, of who we were. So there is a lot of elders carrying these matters. And so they said, well, our children are learning these things. There's a lot of organizations and schools that are helping our children today. But they're learning things that I didn't learn. So how do I connect with them? You know, and so what they told us at the meeting, at the first planning meeting, we want to be able to learn how to do things that are cultural ways too. We could take our children and we could drop them off someplace or sit there behind them and support them, but we never had that chance. And they talked about the healing, personal healing that they had to go through or are still on. So on Thursday, again, November 20th, at 10 o'clock at the multipurpose building in Piawi Choney, Three Mile Creek, we're gonna have a meeting there. And this is what we want to share, we want to get together because if there was ever a meeting on this reservation of really talking to each other, like boarding school survivors, then I think it's time because we are responsible for our grandchildren. You know, and I know that Red Cloud School had several meetings. I went to one of them. But I think for us to really sit down and talk to each other and help ourselves. And I want to be, I'll be gathering information about, like, people say, well, who do I call at court? Who's an advocate? How much do they cost? All of these things, you know. So just providing a list of advocates from the tribal court would be really helpful. You know, and so there's a lot of information, like special education. They ask about IEPs, Individual Education Plan. We don't understand, they say. And they take our children and they do this or that. Or somebody's recommending that they take medicine because they have ADHD or they're diagnosed with something else, you know. And so there's a lot of things that we don't know. And so we're coming together and we're hoping to provide some information. And we've been planning this. And I want to also say, give thanks to Trojan Ruth Cedarface. She's been helping with the planning, she works at Little One School. And also to Stephanie Tukrow from Kyle, Trojan Stephanie, she's been helping too. So we're gonna be doing this. And so if you have time, I know you're all very busy, but stop in just for a little while, listen to what people are saying out there, you know. And so I wanted to, but we'll be giving notices out also on this. And so again, I want to give thanks to you all. And you have a very, I listen sometimes when I'm able to. It's amazing what you all have to contend with, you know. And so just give thanks for what you're doing. And we want to make this a better place, a safe place for all of us to live. We want to give our children, our grandchildren, great-grandchildren hope that this is going to be a better place. Wopila mayapi.
Wopila.
Wopila, I don't, had you till then, that's it Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, so the third item on Law and Order Committee is the OST Chief of Police. In your packets there, the one that has the IG Inspector General Resolution, the second page from the back, there's a 90-day notice that Ms. Means put in to the tribe. And I want to ask Rayanne.
Got a question.
To help me with this one. Oh, request executive for this one.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Weston, second by Councilman Londonman. Secretary, call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
David Poyer? David Poyer? Craig Dillon? David Kelly?
No.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier, votes yes. Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Garfield Steele? Anna Halverson?
No.
Sixteen yes, two no, motion carried. We'll go into executive at 11:28.
Yamni, Yamni, you want me to ask if you could stay in here?